Well, didn't he text you?
Well, he didn't text me that. I just thought him I think so. I don't know. Nobody tells me anything. I just kind of show up.
Ben did go to the courthouse.
Oh, did he? Ben. Thanks for those good run our little representation. I'm not texting too. No, no, that's one texting. I was see Doctor Woody.
He might not know. He said he has something from the Senate.
Yeah.
We're on the way to see him in a second.
Yeah.
We'll get it all worked out.
I'll get it.
I'll get more. I figured it'd be cool. Just leave it. It's okay. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna blame. I do. I want Hal to see this and smile.
The doctor put me on fish oil.
Well, I've taken fish oil here.
Oh, maybe you fished out.
Of course, I do need to order me some more.
Since I've been taking, I had, you know, just each story somebody needs, and I really have those.
I like to take, I like to take fourteen hundred milligrams. So I'll have to take it but once a day.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the first meeting of the new year two thousand twenty-four Randolph County Board of Commissioners. And I trust that you had safe and a merry Christmas and a happy new year. We have a lot to be thankful for in remembrance of twenty twenty-three, but we come to twenty twenty-four at least equally as excited and and it's interesting for the new year and what we think will take place in our county if we prepare for that. And we always give thanks for another year. God's blessings on the county and on us as we lead and as we all take our various parts in making this county a great place to live and go from day to day. So welcome. And we are, as obviously in new places, as the work goes on down at the historic courthouse, as they're putting in a new elevator and some other renovations down there. So we'll be here for at least January, February, and then we'll see how the work progresses down there. Whether we need to continue for another month, but we know now we will meet here for the first two months of the year. So welcome again. Thank all of you for being here. This used to be our commissioners' meeting room. We had a dius up here, a raised floor, and carried on a lot of business here for a number of years and served us well. We've come to like the old courthouse also. This is a place where county government has been conducted and we'll continue to do that on an interim basis. So again, welcome. Bishop Trotten is with us tonight for invocation as we come into our new year. Then we have our pledge of allegiance. So will you please rise?
In thy head with me, as the Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we are thankful. We have crossed the threshold into a brand new year. God, twenty twenty-three saw many highs and many lows, but God, in the midst of all things crazy, you are and were the constant. The Bible says you are the same yesterday, you're the same today, you'll be the same forever. So God, we trust you. Thank you, Lord God, for Randolph County. Thank you for the leadership of our county. God, we pray in the name of Jesus that you would constantly give wisdom and grace to those who lead. God, I pray that you would just lead them in a way that honors you, God, that speaks to the welfare of our community in the name of Jesus. With every tough decision and every hard place, God, we rely on you. God, the Bible says some trust in horses and some trust in cherries, but we will remember the name of the Lord our God. So we pray tonight in the name of Jesus that you would rest in this meeting with us. God, we pray that you would lead this meeting, God, that you would orchestrate it so that you get all of the glory. And God, that our community is edified and encouraged. God, we lift up every commissioner in the name of Jesus. God, we thank you for Hal Johnson. We thank you, God, for the years of service. And God, we speak blessings over him in the name of Jesus. God, whatever his next looks like, I pray that your grace would be upon him and his family. God, thank you for everything that he has meant to our county. And God, we just pray that you would pour back into him everything that he's given out for the welfare of our community. We honor you for this time tonight. We bless you and we trust you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We do have a couple of special recognitions tonight, part of the opening of our agenda. Of course, one is to recognize our retiring county manager, Mr. Johnson. And but first, we're going to recognize the retirement of Catherine Moffett, with twenty-five years of service with the Randolph County Department of Social Services. And Tracy Murphy is going to do the honors tonight and present it. Tracy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
If Kathy would come and stand with me. Ms. Kathy Moffett began her career at Social Services on December the sixteenth nineteen ninety-eight as an income maintenance caseworker. And here we are, January the second, twenty twenty-four, and I've written it wrong several times today. Twenty twenty-four, and she has decided to leave us and sail into the sunset for her new adventures. Kathy has been a part of the Department of Social Services for twenty-five years. She retired as an income maintenance supervisor and is a long-term care specialist. If I have a question about long-term care services or Medicaid, she is my go-to. And now I don't have that go-to. So I guess I have to get her number at home. And she will have to answer those questions for me at home. Kathy's greatest joy at work was knowing she was able to help people during a difficult time in their life. The memory she would treasure is remembering all the people that she had the privilege of working with over the twenty-five years and being named Supervisor of the Year in two thousand and seventeen. In retirement, she looks forward to spending more time with her family, traveling to visit her son and his family in Oklahoma, and making fun memories by camping and taking trips to the beach and the mountains. Congratulations, Kathy. You will truly be missed. Did you want to recognize anybody that came with you this evening?
She did not. Do you have a word to say?
Thankful for my time in North County and for being a part of our country here. It's a very special place.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you.
You have to come up here. We certainly are thankful for your years of service. I'll tell you that. And I hope and wish you the very best as you go into your retirement. And every day be a blessing and a great day for you. Do all the things you want to do. And for your twenty-five years, we're going to give you a call. But the sincerity goes with it and the appreciation goes with it. And hopefully when you look at it, you'll remember us and remember this county and all the people you served in your twenty-five years here. That's the important thing. To Catherine A. Moffett, in recognition of twenty-five years of service, January the second, two thousand twenty-four, by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. God bless you. Is Doug still here? Is Doug still here? Can we turn that mic stand around? So we're going to go up here. All right. Now that we got that done, of course, tonight we are recognizing the retirement of our county manager and a lot of other things along the way, Mr. Hal Johnson. And in our way of trying to recognize and him for all that he's done in this county. And the first thing I want to do is read a proclamation that is signed by all the individual. You taught us to be frugal, so we didn't frame it. So it says, whereas Hal Johnson started his employment with Randolph County Government in nineteen seventy-five, whereas prior to his employment with the county, he had graduated from Pfeiffer College and served in the United States Army. Whereas during Hal's early years with Randolph County, he served in a few capacities till he became Planning Director in July of nineteen eighty-five. Whereas in nineteen ninety-one, Hal was appointed by Governor Jim Martin to represent the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and municipalities as a member of the North Carolina Environmental Erosion Control Commission. And whereas in nineteen ninety-seven, he was appointed by the Board of County Commissioners to serve as Chairman of the newly established Tourism Development Authority, representing the county and all its municipalities. And whereas in two thousand and eight, Hal was again appointed by the Board of County Commissioners to serve as the Chairman of Randolph County's first Historic Landmark Preservation Commission. And whereas he remained the Planning and Zoning Director until December two thousand fourteen, over nineteen years. And in that nineteen years, there was a lot went on. And whereas in December two thousand fourteen, he became the county manager and served until his retirement, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas he has made numerous contributions to the county, including two countywide strategic plans, the creation of the Unified Development Ordinance, and North Carolina's first county centralized permitting program and property development advisory team. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Randolph County Board of Commissioners does hereby give great thanks and appreciation to Mr. Johnson for his vision and leadership that has continued throughout his forty-eight years of service to the county and its citizens. Be it further proclaimed that the Board and employees of the county wish Mr. Johnson the best health, safety, and well-being in his retirement. I need a motion to approve. And a second, hold in favor of I? There is, there is more, and that touches a lot of the highlights of Hal's career. But sort of getting ready for today, I just wondered how you sum up in a few minutes forty-eight years of a person's life. And forty-eight years of the life that Hal has lived and worked and served among us to the taxpaying citizens of this county. It is something that has never happened before in this county. I don't believe in North Carolina. And I doubt seriously that it'll ever happen again in the forty-eight years of service to the extent and all the different roles that Hal has played in that process. There was opposition. There was differing opinions in virtually everything we do in county government. When somebody's happy, somebody else is mad. They don't like it, and their side doesn't win. But Hal's always had that temperament and the personality to deal with those issues with the public and to make the best of those situations. I know there's many nights that there was an empty seat at the supper table when he was chairing all these meetings in addition to the other roles that he served all day long. Most of these meetings were at night, and he continued to do that without exception, without complaining. And he did it, he did it very well. In nineteen eighty-six to eighty-seven, he put in the first countywide zoning in Randolph County that has served us so well, and with that came a land use plan, protecting the farmers as well as serving and the work, the development would take place in the county. We continue to do that all the time, and in fact, we're just doing it recently with the Eastern Randolph Development Plan, as we continue to plan for the growth that comes here. And as I said, this resolution brings out a lot of those things. And the Toyota project that's bringing the growth to Eastern Randolph. All that that's going to necessitate is we work with the local governments in that area. I know that the mayor's here tonight from Franklinville. He's been a part of that process. And all the Ramsoor Liberty, all in that process. Along the way, Hal taught land use classes at the UNC School of Government. In nineteen ninety-one, as we mentioned, he went to the Environmental Erosion Control Commission. Now we come to wish Hal the best in his retirement. Gloria's here tonight. And it's, it's difficult to put in words and to say exactly the meaning and the depth of what Hal has done for this county. And to see all the different, when he came along and even when I came, none of those things existed in this county. We didn't have ambulance service. We didn't have nine-one-one. We didn't have the Rannamun Lake. We didn't have any of those things that today we take for granted. They didn't exist forty-eight years ago, forty years ago. And now they do, and the county benefits from it today. And Hal has played a key role in every one of those situations, every one of those areas of growth that's taken place. And just to say thank you, and we also have a clock for him. And he can, he can take his name played in his, in his, his agenda book with him also. But I know that, that there's one thing that Hal really wants. And I'm going to ask Senator Craven to come up and join us here tonight. Because it took a lot of work, took effort to make this process work in a timely manner and to push it through. And so we have, we have a special presentation. You want to do your first?
Go on ahead, Mr. Trump.
This is the State of North Carolina Order of the Longleaf Pine for Hal Johnson. We have presented several of these over the years. None more deserving, none more important and applicable than the one to Hal Johnson today. Reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and seal of Hal C. Johnson, Jr., to do, to do by the, by those present confer, the Order of the Longleaf Pine. With the rank of Ambassador extraordinary privilege to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast in select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the longleaf pine, the summer land where the sun doth shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State. Hal, hang it high, man.
Hal, I don't know that we can one-up that, but I want to, I want to record your forty-eight years of service in the Senate Journal. And so on behalf of Lieutenant Governor, who served as President of the Senate, Mark Robinson, the President pro Tim Philberger, and myself, we want to recognize you for forty-eight years of service to Randolph County, and thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you so much.
Well, I want my wife to come up here. I asked Gloria to come up here and stand with me just a second. Someone said, well, what are you going to say when you retire? And I go, well, after forty-eight years, I've had the chance to say about everything I need to say. But, but I want to say this, the, the, these county commissioners have, have really addressed historic issues in Randolph County during these past ten years. Those of you out here, and I know every one of you, and worked with you on so many projects. These have been absolute historic times for Randolph County. It is my honor to have worked with you during those times. You are special people in Randolph County Government. I am so proud of what this organization has done. I thank all of you, and I know that there's a lot of things to be done, and I know that you're, you're up to the task. It's been a true honor to, to have served with you over these past ten years. And I want to say again to the Board of County Commissioners and to our elected officials, it takes courage to make some of the tough decisions that they've had to make. And, and we, we look at the mega side and we look at, we look at so many different things. We used to be here, Darrell, this room would be at two hundred people out, out the front door on, on different public hearings that the county commissioners have made. And, and they have had to make historic decisions impacting Randolph County. I am honored beyond words to tell you how honored I have been to work with them and, and all of you out there. So thank you very much. I wish, wish all of you the very best in your future, and I look forward to the next chapter of my life also. Thank, thank all of you.
We're going to take about a five-minute break while we switch everything back around here. So relax or whatever.
Well, just because that, we made it.
You take this question?
Anybody beat any, any of the tankers?
Yeah, who else you think's going to come in here?
I don't like that they have eyes. They might be showing all kinds of stuff around saying we not know it. Babe's got pins sticking around.
Yeah.
All right, we will come back to order. I think Hal has left the building. We're going to miss him, and I'm sure, seriously wish him all the very best. At this time, we have another couple of issues to take care of, housekeeping items and that has to do, of course, this seat's empty. And we're in the process of doing a major search. And in the interim, we need an interim county manager to make decisions functioning in that role. And the recommendation is that that would be Will Massey. Will has been Assistant County Manager for a number of years along with his work as our Chief Finance Officer. And there is a resolution appointing Inland County Manager and pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one fifty-three A eighty-four, Will Massey is hereby appointed as Inland County Manager for Randolph County. As Inland County Manager, Will Massey is authorized and empowered to act on behalf of the county, which includes those powers and duties set out in North Carolina General Statute one fifty-three A dash eighty-two. So I have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Those in favors. Let me know when I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose none. So Will, now you can leave your. So, Will, now you can leave your, uh, play your clip. County has had for many years a succession policy to deal with issues that might, uh, might come up over time. And with the addition of our new Assistant County Manager, William Johnson, we are redoing our, uh, succession plan to recognize this position. So, the order of succession policy, uh, would now, would conclude Will Massey, the Assistant County Manager and Finance Officer, William Johnson, Assistant County Manager of Operations, and Patson Arthur is our County Engineer. That is a succession plan for Randolph County if needed. So, uh, to have a motion to approve the succession plan.
So, so moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, question? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and they are so noted. All right, so now we will begin our agenda for this evening. And the first item is, of course, our consent agenda. There is one item in the consent agenda, I think it's the very last one.
Uh, hold on there, public comment.
Oh, it's public comment, sorry, I'm sorry. Public comment period. Mr. Attorney, you wanna?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, I'll read, as usual, the rules of procedure for the public comment period. The rules of procedure are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to fifteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally and privately before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues drained during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. And speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters inherent in this information.
Do we have anyone?
David Essick?
Hello, my name's David Essick. Here to talk to you about the same thing I came to talk to you about last month. Um, an issue that's ongoing, been ongoing for fifteen years. Our registered deeds is not acting appropriately, doing what she's supposed to do. That's, that's the blunt of it. I know that after I got done speaking last month, um, uh, Mr. Morgan told all of you that it's not a problem with Ms. Lowe and that Ms. Lowe is not doing incorrectly. Well, people at state level say she is. They've written her letters saying she is. They've appeared in her training classes saying that she's acting incorrectly. And she's using this board as an excuse to say why she's doing it. This board approves our UDO. Our UDO has nothing in it that says for Ms. Lowe to be doing with Platts what she's doing. Nothing in that UDO. And she's still doing it. Throwing it back on saying the, the board resolution told her to and that Hal told her to on a two thousand and eight memo. The two thousand and eight memo, I have a copy of, it's, it's written incorrectly. Hal incorrectly stated what was written in the UDO. It's wrong. Um, that was the first matter. Second matter was, when I stood up last month to talk to all of you and said I emailed you the day before, all of you looked around at each other and it's like, where's my email? So, three people in the front of this room have talked to me since then and said, hey, your email was not forwarded to us because Hal Johnson didn't want it forwarded to us. Hal's gone, you guys need to address these matters. Uh, Mr. Morgan, I know you, you stated to another surveyor that after Hal was gone, you look into this. Hal's gone, it's time to do it. Um, this matter has been ongoing and ongoing and ongoing and nobody has addressed it. Thank you.
I think we got that, uh, email the next morning, uh, Mr. Essick. I think it was actually sent on Sunday.
Yeah, and the email from your website, if I go in there and say I wanna email my lit and fisher.
Mr. Essick, you need to come up.
If I go on your website and click on Mr. McDowell's name, it leads me to believe and anybody in the voting public to believe that they're emailing directly to the person they voted for. Every one of you has a, a name on there and an email address on there.
What leads you to believe that it's going directly to that person?
Because the email address says maxton dot McDowell at Randolph County dot.
And, and all, I will tell you that all of county employees, their emails are public record.
They are public record. But if it says maxton dot McDowell at Randolph County, that leads me or anybody that uses email to believe I'm emailing Mr. McDowell. Those emails, what you guys need to tell the voting public is don't go directly to these guys. They go and get filtered and, and chosen as to which ones get forwarded. Three of you have told me that.
I don't believe that's accurate.
Well, why, then, then let me ask what happens with the emails when, when some, somebody emails through the website?
They're sent on to us?
Not always. There's three people in the front of this room right now that'll tell you otherwise.
I'm not one of them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. We'll pick that up. Okay, now consent agenda and item, the, um, last item in, which is to ratify the vote to approve the law for the Family Crisis Center. Uh, Commissioner Kidd is on that board and, and cannot vote. So, we're gonna take that out to vote separately. Uh, is there any other item on the consent agenda that any commissioner would like to, uh, pull out with consent to act separately?
I, I don't wanna pull one out, I'd just like to make a brief comment about one. So, I'd just like to make a comment about H, which is the Seagrove Ula wastewater capital project. Um, it's three, three million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds. And we are really pleased to be able to appropriate that to, um, to that treatment plant. They have no capacity there. So, it will make it, um, it will give them the capacity to grow by having this in place. But I also wanted to just point out that it's run by, it, it, it's not like, um, Ashborough or some of our other Archdale, some of our other municipalities that have, um, you know, people, employees in place that handle that. It is run by a board, the Seagrove Ula Water Authority. And so, I just, um, I just wanted to make the comment that none of this money will be awarded for at least a couple of months. And I would, conversations have already been taken place before the decision is brought to us to, you know, to send this money there. But I also would like to say that I think it would be wisdom for the board of the Seagrove Ula Water Authority and the Board of County Commissioners to have, uh, some type of joint meeting in order to iron out some issues, discuss long-term goals, perhaps fee schedules, some of those kinds of things. We're spending a lot of money there and it is important to get it right. And I just would like to see that happen as a, you know, as a, as a point of wisdom before we go forward with actually dispersing funds.
I'm sure that will happen. I have notes, Commissioner McDowell and I, I have notes to January of twenty-one. So, for three years, we have met, uh, uh, numbers of times with different ones related to that. We made changes in that board. There was definitely issues down there. Didn't get answers to questions when we were asked, I mean, lots of issues. But, uh, that's the way this thing is, is going forward for now. This is just to set up a fund and we'll know, this board will know before any funds are, are extended.
Excellent, thank you.
Good comment. Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda absent of item N? Have a second?
Second.
Motion second, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, consent agenda is approved. Is there a motion on item N? This is a, uh, ratification of earlier straw votes. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Absent of Commissioner Kidd's vote, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's approved. All right, now to our new business. Item A is our annual audit report. And with us tonight is April Adams and Cherry Becker. April, good evening.
I'm gonna put everything here. All right, so I am, um, happy to be here to give you the results of your June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three financial statement audit. Um, we put this slide in here at first just to kind of, uh, reiterate the point that we do perform the audit, um, working for the board. Um, while all of the work and the actual audit takes place working with, um, employees of the county, we are, um, working and reporting to you as the board. So, I'm April Adams, I'm the engagement partner. And what that means is that I, uh, take responsibility on behalf of the firm for the audit and carrying out all the, all the procedures related to it. Every audit that Cherry Becker does, um, we have an internal requirement of quality control for, um, someone of another partner level to review that report as well. And so, Scott Anderson served in that role for our firm. You did have a returning team, um, Jennifer Moran is the audit manager. She basically carries out the audit plan that we put together. She oversees all the staff and makes sure that, um, all the individual work is done. And then Renee Vandemere served as your senior along with several other staff, um, actually carrying out the, the detailed testing and transactions, stuff like that. All right. So, what I'd like to cover with you tonight is not only the results of the audit as well as the single audit. Um, I just wanna touch base on how we report on internal controls as a part of the audit. We are required to communicate several other things and that's the remaining of the agenda. Adjusting journal entries if any were identified during the audit. Um, a lot, a lot of different, um, aspects of accounting practices if there was changes or just, just if they existed, period, covering those with you. I'll touch on, um, our responsibility to maintain our independence. Um, and then I've got, again, just more additional required communications that I'll cover. All right, so the most important thing here is the results of the audit. Um, as, uh, as, we did issue the report in November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Um, that report covered not only the financial statements but also the single audit. Um, that is where the county administers a lot of federal and state dollars, um, as you were just discussing the ARPA funds. Um, and so we take a look at those as well and I'll, we report on that as well. But all opinions that we did issue for the county are what we call unmodified opinions. That doesn't sound great, but that is the opinion that you want. That's also known as a clean opinion. That is the highest level we can give you as an accounting firm, um, that your financial statements are free from material misstatement, um, as well as in compliance with the compliance requirements for those grants that we tested. So, speaking of testing grants, so we don't test every single grant that, uh, the county has on a, on an annual basis. Um, we do have a, a protocol of how to determine which programs to audit. These are the ones that we audited as major programs. What that means is that we figure out with each one of those programs what the directed material compliance requirements are and we test against those. And so, we did that for the, these programs listed here and we didn't have any findings, um, identified as that. So, that's a full clean report on those programs. All right, when it comes to internal controls, um, we don't opine on your internal controls, but we are required by the audit standards to do quite a bit of work for internal controls. We identify all of your significant transaction cycles. That's things like how does the county receive cash? How does the county disperse cash? Um, how does the county, uh, pay, make payroll? Um, and then finally, how does the county, um, perform its financial close, um, in reporting? So, that just means how does the county get the information out of that financial system and into the audit report itself? So, as I mentioned, we don't actually opine on it, but we are required to report if we identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in that review of all of those policies and procedures that we looked at. And so, I'm happy to report that we didn't identify any material weaknesses. Um, we can't say the same thing about significant deficiencies. We didn't report any, um, but we can't say that we didn't, um, identify any because there could still be some that exist there, uh, because we didn't look at the non-significant transaction cycle. So, there may be deficiencies in there that we didn't look at. All right, corrected and uncorrected misstatements, this is another way of saying adjusting journal entries as your audit firm, um, who wants the trial balance is given to us as a part of the audit. We're on the hook for tracking any adjustments that may be needed, um, and reporting those to you, um, if, if they had come about during the audit. And so, I'm happy to report that we didn't have any corrected misstatements or uncorrected. Um, and what that means is basically all those policies and procedures that you have in place are accurately capturing all the financial transactions, um, and getting those reported correctly in your financial statements. The next couple of slides talk about the qualitative aspects of accounting. Um, the first one is just talking about significant, um, accounting policies. So, if there was any significant changes in that, we would be required to report those to you. Typically, this happens when a new accounting standard is implemented. Once again, then we've had these years after year after year, it seems like. So, another one for this year was Gatsby ninety-six. That is your subscription-based information technology arrangements. In plain language, that just means, uh, software licenses, okay? So, Will and his team looked up with IT, I'm sure, all of the different contracts that this county has related to subscriptions, um, for licenses for, for software. Um, and then we basically are required to record a right to use the, those licenses and software, um, as well as that liability for the actual cash payments that are being made over the future. Um, another area that we look at is related party transactions, just like you just abstained, um, from a vote. We look at any, any kind of related party transactions that might be significant and just make sure that theirs are accounted for correctly, um, and that they're at arm's length, um, as well. And so, we didn't have any issues identified as a result of that. Similar to that is significant unusual transactions. We take a look, um, and, and, and ask about them, inquire about them and look for them while we're doing our testing. Just to make sure that if there one did exist during the current year, that the accounting for that transaction in particular is correct. Um, we didn't identify any significant unusual transactions for the year. All right, estimates, so as you can imagine, there's lots of estimates, uh, that exist within your financial statements. These are management's best determination of what that amount is, um, and it could play out differently in the future. The biggest estimates that you're existing in your financial statement are those related to your pension and employment benefits, other post-employment benefits, which is health insurance for retirees. And so, those are based on actuarial results, um, but those actuarial results are based on information provided by the county. And so, we're just pointing that out that those could, um, be different in the future. And they do change quite a bit year to year, just based on, um, different factors. Um, all right, and then we would identify if there was any financial statement disclosures that we felt maybe weren't neutral, consistent or clear or easy to understand. We would bring those to your attention and, and encourage you to take a look at those notes, um, in the financial statements. We don't think that there's anything, um, not neutral, consistent or clear. We don't have any, you know, one for you to look at specifically. We think you could pick up your financial statements and the footnotes and read them and, and understand what's going on. Um, independence, so we are required as your external auditors to maintain independence, not only from the start of the audit but all the way through. And so, part of that, um, is us identifying anything that we do in addition to the audit itself. Um, and so, the only thing that we do in addition to the audit is what we call prepare, prepare the data collection form. This is where the county has to report not only the federal expenditures of awards but the audit results with that. And so, we actually put it in the system and then there's a systematic process of where I certify it and then Will goes in and certifies it and submits it. So, he does ultimately take responsibility for, for the work that we do there and making sure that we've put it all in the system correctly, basically. No issues there, we believe that allows us to still maintain our independence. All right, this slide, um, has got a couple of different required communications. First is if we had any difficulties, we would want to inform you of those during the audit. We didn't have any difficulties. We also didn't have any disagreements with, with Will or Hal during the process, which is great. Um, we didn't consult any other auditors on any matters that we felt like we needed any special expertise. Um, and then the last one in purple is pretty important to me. This is the management representation letter. Just letting you know that we, uh, you know, we take a, we keep a list of things that get represented to us by management that we have to rely upon in order to make our opinion. Um, and so, we keep a list of that and then at the end of the audit, we ask, um, Will and Hal to sign that letter, um, just acknowledging that they, they made those representations to us and that our opinion's based on it. So, it's important to have that. Um, we're not aware that management consulted any other accountants for second opinions on anything during the audit. Um, we don't have any other findings or issues to report to you. Uh, again, in purple is important to me, fraud and illegal acts. Our audit is not designed to look for fraud and illegal acts. That would be much more invasive, um, procedures performed there. But if we were to come across those during anything that we did look at, we would be required to bring those to your attention. And then lastly, going concern, um, we are required to evaluate the county's ability to be here twelve months from our report date. So, we do think you'll be here, um, in operations a year from now. I'm sure that's relieving to hear. All right, um, so this slide is just talking about how our opinion lays out amongst all the different financial statement pieces within that, um, uh, ACFER, which is the, uh, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So, we basically opine on So we basically opine on the basic financial statements in the footnotes, and then we give an in relation to opinion on some of the other information. And then things like the management discussion and analysis and the tenure data that's in there for your pension and OPEB actuarial information, we don't opine on those. But we do review all of that information to make sure that it doesn't contradict what we do opine on. So just to know that it's not a blanket opinion on everything that's included in that report. Alright, lastly is the upcoming changes. So anytime Gatsby puts out a new standard, we have to evaluate its impact on the county. And so there's three here. The only one I'm gonna focus on tonight that I think will have any impact whatsoever is the compensated absences. That will be another estimate within your financial statements where you're gonna be responsible for having to report the actual amounts of sick leave that will result in cash payment. And so as you can imagine, that's a lot of forecasting or looking back at the history of what's actually had, has had to be paid out in cash versus used as service credit for retirement. So we'll look at figuring out how to do that. We've got till, we don't have to do it next year, it'll be 2025. Got some time to figure that out. Will's gonna be busy anyway. Alright, I'll be happy to take any questions. But that's all I had for tonight.
Any questions?
How thick was the report?
What, about two hundred pages or so?
How many pounds were they?
Yeah. We don't ever print them out anymore, so who knows?
Alright. Good to know.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Item B is road renaming for Gary Pucci Cox. Is Stephen Cox here tonight? Here you go. Anything you want to say?
Good evening. My name is Stephen Cox. First of all, thank you for having me here this evening. Certainly appreciate it. Happy New Year to everyone. If anyone has a copy of the resolution that has been handed out, I believe the resolution speaks for itself. There are many more details that I personally put into the submission to the state of North Carolina. But outside of the resolution, I do believe, although my dad has been deceased for 14 years, almost 14 years, the influence he had on many people of this community, Ashboro, Randolph County, the motorcycling community, the sporting community in the state of North Carolina, I believe all of that still hangs pretty heavily in the area. And he still continues to work for us today, even though he's gone. But again, I appreciate your time, and that'll be all.
How long do you anticipate the process to take?
So if this does go through, I have to resubmit it to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I would expect, my personal goal is to get it pushed through by spring. And the state was very responsive, so I think my submission was pretty good. So if they'll continue to be as responsive as they have been in the past, it should not be a problem.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Alright, we have a resolution that we included. Any questions on the matter? I have a motion to approve the resolution in support of recognition of Gary Pucci Cox by naming a portion of Highway 134 in his memory.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll take a second.
Motion and second, further discussion of questions. Those in favor, ladies and gentlemen, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it's approved. Alright, item C is more road naming. Aunt Tanya?
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight you have before you a list of six new road names. These road names are in response to roads up and near the mega site. I'll just run down. There's a Michael Lee Lane that was unanimously approved by the planning board last month. Old Red Cross Road also unanimously approved. Pierce Denny Road unanimously approved. Camelway also unanimously approved. Dogwood Lane unanimously approved. And Carolina Lily Road was suggested to change to Dodson Lake Road at the planning board meeting. And the board did approve the Dodson Lake Road unanimously. You have maps in your packet as well showing you where these roads and actually layout instead with the new layouts. I can take any questions, but I know we're going to public hearing too.
Okay. Any questions for Tanya? Alright, we will open the public hearing. I guess, do we need to do these one at a time? Then all at the same time, okay. Is anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of naming these six different roads in and around the mega site? Okay. I will might comment on a couple of them. Some of these are for residents in the area at the planning board meeting. They did speak in favor of that, so I appreciate the planning board's consideration of that. So appreciate that very much. No one here speak in favor at the public hearing or opposed, then we'll close the public hearing and look to the board for direction. No else being here, and it's in my area. I will, I think this will make some folks happy up in that area, including me. I make a motion that we approve the six new road names as recommended by the planning board. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not. All those in favor, the motion, no one saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Alright, we will move on from there. The annual report for the TDA, the Tourism Development Authority, Amber Scarlett, you're already here.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
I come to you on behalf of, I'm gonna pick this up a little bit maybe. Maybe not.
Careful with that.
I'm just gonna talk really loud. You don't hear me, okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. I come to you on behalf of the Randolph County Tourism Development Authority Board of Directors with a brief overview of some key highlights from our 2022 annual report. We do receive these, I know we're in 2024, and we just wrapped up 2023. We do receive our numbers and reports in August of the following year, so I look forward to coming to you with 2023 numbers next January. I'm gonna start at the nation, go to the state, and then come locally to Randolph County. U.S. Travel Association reports $1.2 trillion in direct domestic and international spending in 2022, which produced an economic footprint of $2.6 trillion, and that's returning to 2019 levels. In 2022, travel supported nearly 15 million American workers and directly employed 8 million. Total spending by domestic and international visitors in North Carolina reached $33.3 billion in 2022, and that sum represents a 15% increase over 2021 expenditures. The previous record of $29.22 billion was set in pre-pandemic 2019.
So one second. You said it was a 15% increase?
Yes.
Okay.
From 2021. Visitors to North Carolina generated $4.2 billion in federal, state, and local taxes in 2022, and that was a 7.9% increase from 2021. Direct tourism employment in North Carolina increased 9.8% to 216,900 employees. Direct tourism payroll increased 13.5% to $8.7 billion. Each North Carolina household saved $512 on average in state and local taxes as a direct result of those visitor spending. North Carolina hosted nearly 43 million visitors in 2022. Locally in Randolph County, our travel generated $178.63 million in visitor spending, and that was an increase of approximately 4% from 2021. Revenues in 2022 totaled at $7.9 million in state tax revenues and $4.7 million in local tax revenues. Randolph County supported 1,130 direct tourism jobs and more than $42 million in payroll income. The sales tax generated by travel throughout Randolph County is attributed for tax savings of $86.20 per county resident in 2022. So occupancy tax revenues in 2022, they were reported at $1,343,329.70. That was a 16% increase from 2021. As a reminder, these taxes are collected from hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, Airbnb properties, those short-term rentals, and structures on campgrounds in Randolph County. The average occupancy of these properties was reported at 55.9%, and that was a 3.2% increase from 2021's occupancy. Visitors to Randolph County paid an average daily rate on room rentals at our properties of $101.82. That was an increase of 20.2% from 21. From this rate charged on each room, we were able to collect in Randolph County $57.71, and that was an increase of 23.4%. Demand for those hotel rooms increased 3.2%, and overall revenues increased 23.4% when compared to the prior year. As far as our destination, each January, our team will call our attractions to find out what their visitation was for that previous calendar year. So of the 29 attractions that were surveyed, they reported approximately 1,427,241 visitors in the calendar year of 2022. That was an increase of 9% from 2021. Visitors, of course, came from North Carolina. We saw visitors from South Carolina, Florida, Virginia, Pennsylvania. Within North Carolina, we welcome visitors from the Raleigh-Durham Chapel Hill area, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Hop Point, Burlington, Charlotte, Gastonia, Concord, Wilmington, and Southport. International travel picked back up, and we have requests come to us from Canada, Algeria, United Kingdom, India, Indonesia, France, Russia, and Spain. So our visitor centers that we also operate in Seagrove, that's another way that we reach tourists that might be their only stop in North Carolina. So it's very important that we are able to touch base with those folks. We have 10 part-time employees, and we have one full-time employee. They work six days a week at the visitor centers in Seagrove. In 2022, they assisted 63,988 visitors. That was a 6% increase from 2021's 60,381 visitors. And a preview to 2023, they've already reached 105,000 at the end of November of 2023. So we're definitely gonna exceed those numbers. Distribution of our official travel guide, they distributed 30,500 of our collateral material. The North Carolina State Department of Tourism road maps, people still use those maps, 21,600. And the North Carolina travel guides that were distributed, 14,400. We also have these registries, so we find out where these folks are traveling from. That helps me determine where we're gonna market to, to touch base with them again, to keep drilling into their minds. You gotta come to Randolph County. You gotta come see what's going on in our area. So with those guest registries, we had 5,316, and that was an increase of 150% from 2021. Our international guest registry entries were 55 compared to zero in 21. Keeping in mind, in 21, we had the travel ban, the international travel ban. We were able to host different events at the centers more than in 2022. National Travel and Tourism Week is always in May. Operation Thank You was in October. Open House in November around the Pottery Festival weekend, being in the Seagrove area, and our 12 Days of Christmas event in December. Continuing through the annual report, you'll see numbers on our social media and our website, our social media accounts. All of those have seen a 100% growth. We've been able to hire dedicated staff to those. It has become a full-time job. I would say 16, 17 years ago, it wasn't even on our radar. But now it is definitely a full-time job. So we've been able to dedicate the time and increase those followers to those pages. The public relations and social media marketing efforts, just some highlights from that section. We were fortunate to host several multiple influencers and journalists from across our great state, the southeastern United States, and even some from the West Coast. From the media hosting opportunities, we saw notable results of 539,000 estimated views, 63 online placements, print circulation of 956,000 reach, and more than 6 million in readership. Social posts from media that we hosted, 52, five television segments, two statewide Raleigh and Triad markets. And over 56 tourism partners and small businesses were featured in 2022 from those outreaches. Our visual advertising on the final page, you'll see that we have several different sizes, several different publications. We're print and digital. We were able to support 200 advertisements and target our audiences of the Triangle, the state of North Carolina, and reaching out to Virginia and South Carolina markets. Just some final thoughts on our 2022. Our marketing efforts continued to be supported by each of our non-municipalities that possess unique attributes shining each and every day. Those tourism partners are the true heroes of the successes in this report. The experiences they provide for visitors, customers, and guests are what help us solidify our commitment to hospitality. Their passion allows us to remain focused on being family-friendly, affordable, strategically located in that tourism destination in the heart of North Carolina. And I do thank you all for your support throughout the years as well. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
I have to point out that for the top visitor request, number four is the Deep River State Trail map. So for, you know, our mayor back here from Franklinville, for our trail coordinator, thank you for the work. That's pretty good.
It's definitely nice.
Bringing people in.
That is affordable, family-friendly, and centrally located.
Yes, yes.
We appreciate the information. As you was running through that, I sure wish we could get that information, and that's all this. So all this is good information as far as, especially the comparisons and kind of the upward trend that you're seeing going forward. So that's good, good news, especially before we worked three, four years ago.
Yes.
So real good news. Any other comments or questions for Amber?
Not necessarily a comment or anything, but it looks like Randolph County is getting discovered.
We are. We're not a hidden gem anymore.
Exactly right. It looks like it in a big, big way. International.
I just, I challenge you to go to a restaurant and recognize more than five people that you know anymore. It's amazing. And we've all been around. So these folks are coming from out of town, and they're finding our great restaurants, our great attractions, our great trails. Hope can tell you, she's out on the trails. She's always, you know, a great advocate for what we do. And if she runs across someone from South Carolina or Virginia, you're telling them, hey, you need to go to this restaurant. You need to go shop downtown or wherever. So we appreciate all of that.
Advertising.
Alright, any other comments or questions for Amber? Amber, we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
And look forward to next year and the report and in between, so.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Alright, move to item E. Sheriff, you're gonna present purchase of some automobiles.
Yes, sir. First of all, I wanna thank you for the last project, Project Invictus. I know I had to leave early. Appreciate your support there. Tonight, we're here to request approval for the purchase of six Dodge Durango Pursuit vehicles in accordance with our purchasing policy. Our intentions is to purchase these vehicles through the North Carolina statewide vehicle contract. Under the North Carolina statewide vehicle contract, Performance Automotive, I think out of Benson, has been awarded the bid. The total cost for the purchase of these six vehicles amounts to $258,592.98. It is worth noting that the funding for these vehicles had been included in the sheriff's office budget for the 2023, 2024 budget year, fiscal year. And the individual cost of these vehicles will be $43,098.83. And does anyone have any questions?
Any, I know in the past you've gotten certain makes and models based on what they're used for. Now, these are the Durangos?
Yes, sir.
Is any particular reason why they were selected?
It's all we can get right now.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We got some trucks in earlier, and now the Durangos are available, and we're trying to grab those.
Okay. And I guess that Okay. And I guess this, that, that's fully outfitted with all the necessary equipment?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. I know, um, one of the more humorous things years ago was, uh, Phil Kent was very much, uh, Commissioner Phil Kent was very much a proponent of Dodge vehicles. And at one point, uh, Dodge vehicles were not, um, purchased evidently. And so, uh, he had several questions. Donovan, was it you? Okay. And he, uh, I think Chairman Holmes basically just said, uh, Donovan, why don't you take Phil on a ride next time? Y'all figure it out. So, yeah, so.
Now, the, the lighting, uh, outfitting of the vehicle is not included in that project.
Okay. I thought that was awful cheap for that, for that amount. So, okay. Any, uh, any questions, comments?
Are these added to your fleet, or is he replacing some on your fleet, or what? We're replacing. Um, we have a huge percent that's well over a fat, a hundred thousand miles, and we're making do right now. Uh, some of those that are coming off the, as a patrol officer, turning those in, they're going straight to the junk pile. Uh, we're getting some of the parts off of them to try to salvage as much as possible, but, uh, it's not like it used to be. You know, we could turn around and sell those vehicles, but now they're just wore out with so many miles.
And, and those, these are, um, SUV-type vehicles with the, um, I'm assuming, are they four-wheel drive or, or just high-clerks?
Yes, we, we have some four-wheel drive. These are.
Okay.
And they could accommodate a canine.
Right.
In any other equipment that we may add to it.
I had the opportunity to do, do a ride-along back in the summer, I guess it was now. And some of the, you could have an exciting ten-mile-hour chase on some of the roads that, uh, that you have to go back and patrol back down to some of the areas of the county. So, um, I, I, I very much understand the need for these, uh, all-terrain, more tight vehicles as opposed to your standard, you know, patrol car.
Yeah, there's, um, you may have went down Meadowlands.
Yes, exactly. It was the most exciting. I could see a ten-mile-hour chase being just exciting down through there, um, because it is, it is, um, it's, it's rough roads back down in that area. Any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I'll make that motion to approve the purchase of six Dodge Durangos in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to item, uh, F, uh, change in, uh, make, Donovan Davis.
I'll explain.
I believe you've got, uh, three Chevy Tahos.
That's correct. Um, ditto to what the sheriff said. Uh, difficulties finding vehicles. We're using the sheriff's, uh, awarding process, Sheriff's Association product, uh, bids for the purchase of three Tahos, which we were just told in the beginning of December would be available in three to four months from Modern, uh, Modern Chevrolet in Winston. The, uh, the reason we go with Chevys is because we can take equipment, like our pull-out trays in the back for all of our medical equipment and things. We can switch them from vehicle to vehicle and not have those costs carry over from year to year. So that is what we're replacing is three Tahos that are just simply worn out. Uh, not all of them will be, you know, the equipment will be updated into the new vehicles, but some of it will. Um, but our author, uh, our, um, bid contract price for three of the Tahos was eighty-five thousand per vehicle. Uh, it's under contract twenty-two zero eight zero nine one three RR. As again, I mentioned the Sheriff's Association competitive bidding and award contract pricing. Um, these are quick-response vehicles for the department, and my request is to authorize the purchase of three Chevy Tahos from Modern Chevrolet in Winston-Salem for a total of one seventy-one, one twenty-six.
Any, uh, questions for Donovan?
Yes, I'm sorry. It is included in my budget. I'm not asking for new money.
So it's, it's already included budget. It's just, um, authorization to purchase?
Yes.
Okay. Any, uh, any comments or questions for Donovan?
So what's the eighty-five thousand figure?
It's per vehicle.
But if you divide that out, it's not that much.
Then I probably wrote it wrong.
See, that'd be about fifty.
Fifty-seven thousand, forty-two. And so I was wondering if the other one was?
No, they're, they are all three the same price. I just made it, messed it up there.
I thought that was a mighty expensive Tahoe. It had the leather seats and everything, I bet.
Yeah. Well, they went up, and I was looking back at previous ones, so there's no telling what happened.
Okay, well, they're, they're cheaper than eighty-five thousand dollars. Thank, thank goodness.
Sorry.
But our, our motion there is written would still be, still appropriate.
Well, it is the correct amount, the total amount.
Okay, total amount's correct. Okay.
Good.
New year.
All right.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Donovan? Dot, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I love me a Tahoe, so I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of three Chevy Tahos in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars from Modern Chevrolet in Winston.
Is there a second?
Second, Ted.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donovan. All right. That moves us over to item G, uh, transfer health care grant to Northwest Randolph Human Resources Project. Uh, our new interim county manager, William Massey, will be acting as finance officer at this point, I guess.
Put that hat on. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for, um, vote of confidence and letting me be, uh, interim manager for a couple of months. Um, we'll find out how well, uh, Hal has us all trained. The healthcare grant we got, uh, through the General, General Assembly a couple of years ago, it's been on hold, and we have gotten permission from the state to use that for the Balfour Avenue building, uh, both for the purchasing and for the renovation of that. And so, uh, that frees up some of the local money. And so there's a little game of, uh, fixing and updating the budget for a, a variety of funds. The other thing we got permission to use it for was, um, uh, for some of the repayment of the Real Health Stabilization loan, uh, back to UNC Health. So there's a transfer back to the general fund, but ultimately what we're trying to do is restore the money in the capital reserve that we had, uh, set aside a couple of months ago for the Ag Center. When the bids came in and we had to adjust the bids, uh, we pulled the money out of the, uh, capital reserve. So what this, uh, series of budget amendments does is just kind of fixes the budget, um, based on all these transactions and ups, updates it to what we intend.
Okay. Any questions for Will? Essentially, this is just some, I won't say housekeeping, but essentially that's what it is to recognize the four million dollars in the, uh, that, that grant.
Right. And it also closes out the healthcare grant.
Right.
By moving it to the capital project.
And it does also, um, the million dollar, um, basically for, uh, the healthcare stabilization, that's part of it as well. So that's, um, using those funds rather than taxpayer dollars to repay that loan.
Correct.
Okay. Would like to point that out. Any other questions or comments? All right. If not, look for direction from the board.
I'd like to make a, make a motion that we transfer, uh, the healthcare grant to the Northwest Randolph Human Services Project.
Okay. Along with the associated budget amendments?
Along with the associated budget amendments.
Okay. That's the biggest thing is the budget amendments. Is there a second? All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Uh, we'll move us to item H, which is considerate, uh, date and location for the annual retreat. Um, Chairman Frye has had to leave, is not able to be with us. So I guess I will take that one, and.
If you don't mind, I'll, uh, kind of lead off. We provided a couple of dates for the board. Um, what, uh, we tried to work out is, uh, uh, using the space at Cooperative Extension. We use them to make meals a couple of times, and we thought, well, we'll just have our meeting over there, our retreat, and it'll make it easier on, um, the logistics of the, of the lunch meal. So, uh, what they would recommend is, um, uh, March the thirteenth seemed to work better for their schedule, but we can work other dates in as well. Didn't know if you haven't had a chance to look at those dates and had a particular preference. We, uh, moved it from February to March just to give us a little bit more time since we're a month later in setting this date.
Does anybody have any issues with the, they gave us four dates. Uh, I'm fine with any of those. That, uh, March thirteenth is a Wednesday. Uh, typically, that's not a highly sought meeting night for a lot of the, uh, various boards and whatnot that we have. Uh, does March thirteenth work for everybody? Okay. All right. Do we want to set that date? I'll entertain a motion, I, I guess over at the Wolfpack Room would be at the, uh, Cooperative Extension.
We'll start at one o'clock.
And there will be food available?
We'll have, we'll have lunch at, uh, noon, and then the, the meeting will start at one.
Okay. All right. All right. Um, is there a motion to?
I'd be glad to make a motion, especially since lunch will be available.
Yeah. I noticed there's a milkshake down there, too.
Yeah, I got the milkshake right here.
Uh, delivered even. All right, uh.
I'll make a motion to set the date for the annual retreat, uh, in the Wolfpack Room at Cooperative Extension on March the thirteenth of twenty-four at one P M.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All is in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. All right. Uh, county manager updates, Will?
I'll just remind the board of a couple of upcoming meetings. You've got on January the eighth, a joint meeting with the Randolph County Board of Education, and also on, uh, the twenty-second, uh, accomplishing two things. One is, um, zoning appeal, and then that will be followed by, uh, a discussion with the leadership from, uh, Randolph Community College.
Okay. All right.
January the eighth, what again, please?
Uh, January the eighth.
January the eighth at four thirty. Dr. Ganey is here, and that is his, uh, the best day of the year for Dr. Ganey. Uh, Dr. Ganey, we need to talk about your personal lifestyle. If that's the best day you have during the year professionally and personally. So, all right. Um, so, anything else, Will?
That's all from me.
Okay. For the next two, at least through February. Okay. All right.
The approach is supposed to be finished in July. However, the, the women feel, the woman really didn't want to eat there.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, any commissioner updates? I have one. Hope, I believe, uh, Chairman Frye said you had one.
Yes, I just wanted to announce that the, uh, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has produced a documentary. It is called The Veterans Battlefield. And it is about the transition that veterans face as they move from being actively in the service into their civilian lives, the value they bring, um, you know, to civilian jobs, and yet the difficulty of, um, of defining the, what they do, so that it fits job descriptions in the civilian world. So, um, so it's about the transitions that they face. Some have, um, injuries, mental health issues, and, um, dealing with those. It's also about, um, the role that counties play in connecting veterans to services. So our county veteran service office is the place to be to get connected to any services that are out there. And so it highlights that role and tries to encourage veterans, so many of whom really don't ask for anything, and yet they're entitled to services that are out there. And we want them to have them, and we want them to know where they can get them. We don't want them paying somebody who's soliciting them to get services that our county veteran service officer can connect them to for free. That's what, that's what we do. So that's, uh, that's what the movie's about. It's just over an hour in length. There are three screenings in Randolph County. Uh, one will be at the Sunset Theater on Sunday, January the twenty-eighth. That one will be at three. One will be on Saturday, February the third, at the Liberty Town Hall. And then one will be on Tuesday, February the sixth, at the Archdale Public Library. So we'll be getting more information out about those. And if you would, whether you're listening at home or in the room, please talk to veterans about it. And not just veterans, but families of veterans or anybody that, uh, would be interested in knowing more. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, anybody else? I, I do want to mention, um, our issues that, with, um, Sand Hill Center. Uh, the, just to kind of try, try this pretty briefly. In, in the state of North Carolina, there was previously six LME MCOs, which are basically the, um, state's agent in providing, uh, and contracting services with the providers for mental health services, and now, uh, also physical health. Those six, uh, were mandated by the General Assembly to become either four or five in anticipation that Sand Hill Center, our, uh, catchment area, which basically stretches from Guilford County down to, uh, Richmond and Anson County, along with Moore and Lee, uh, that is the Sand Hills Catchment Area, moved, uh, to merge with East Point, uh, ten counties just east of Raleigh, uh, in anticipation that, uh, essentially consolidation. That was a voluntary merger, uh, that was voted on by both boards. The, uh, boards there, uh, the governance is, is key because whoever governs, uh, those, uh, on those boards, uh, they get, um, hearing before what the, uh, funds are gonna be and what the programs are. So it's very important. Uh, governance, that's typically been left up to the counties, and counties have had a very integral part of, uh, mental health over the years. Uh, that would have set up a, uh, twenty-nine-member board with, uh, fifteen board seats from the old Sand Hills Catchment Area, uh, ten, uh, fourteen board seats from East Point, uh, with Randolph County receiving, I think it was two of those seats. Uh, since then, in November, the Secretary of Health and Human Resources, so from, uh, Secretary Kinsley, um, basically indicated that that was, merger was gonna be, uh, kind of opted out of in favor of taking those two entities, East Point and Sand Hills, and combining them with Trillium, which is a twenty-eight-member, um, county LME MCO all along the eastern part of North Carolina, down along the coast, basically from, for the most part, Raleigh East, uh, beyond East Point. As of, um, last Friday, I got an email from, uh, the East Point Board indicating that they had appointed, uh, a board of eleven members per what the secretary's directive was. Eleven members would come from Trillium, eleven members would come from the East Point Sand Hills Catchment Areas. Uh, that particular board, the East Point, appointed, took it upon themselves to appoint a board of eleven members. Those eleven members, um, six were from East Point, which has ten counties, about, um, uh, to less than about forty percent of the total population of two combined counties, uh, two combined catchment areas. Those six went to East Point, five to Sand Hills Center, uh, previous catchment areas. I do feel that there is a, somewhat a political slant here in that, uh, there are eight elected officials on those boards. Uh, seven of them are Democrats, one is unaffiliated. Uh, Guilford County, uh, was appointed two of those five seats, uh, with Chairman Austin and Vice Chairman Foster, uh, being appointed to those seats. Uh, they, as far as I know, had not been members. Uh, they, as far as I know, had not been members and served on any of the Sand Hills Board that had been, uh, cashing along with, uh, uh, Chair, Commissioner, uh, Purdue from Guilford County. I feel that Randolph County has been slighted in this, uh, process, uh, subverted essentially. We are the second-largest county in the catchment area. Uh, with a new Trillium in that forty-eight county, or forty-six county, uh, area, we would be the sixth largest. Uh, none of the East Point counties that got six seats on that board are as large as Randolph County. In fact, the three Sand Hills counties that were appointed, uh, Anson, Lee, and Hook do not combined, uh, equal the population of Randolph County. Uh, I fired off, uh, I was pretty upset, fired off of, uh, emailed Secretary Kinsley. I hope I was nice. But he did get back with me today. Um, uh, he, uh, had indicated he really didn't have that much authority, although he has unallow authority to cancel contracts, move, uh, counties around, uh, within catchment areas. Is to be noted that Rockingham, a former, uh, Sand Hills County, moved to Baja, a Western LME MCO. Davidson County went with Partners, which is based in Winston-Salem. East Point is, uh, who's calling the shots for Sand Hills is, uh, they are in Beulahville, North Carolina. So, uh, basically the folks on that board are making decisions for folks here in, in Randolph County. So we are looking to meet with, uh, the folks from Trillium, uh, this week. We have a meeting set up to, to talk with them to get an understanding of what's going on here and why Randolph was, um, basically left out of the process, being one of the larger counties. So that's kind of where that is. Uh, just wanted to update the board and, um, uh, we'll see where that, where that leads. But it is important because a lot of what we've been talking about, um, Project Invictus and substance abuse, uh, behavioral health issues, all those opioid settlements, all that is intertwined with this, uh, LME MCO and consolidations within the state, uh, for Medicaid, uh, primarily for Medicaid patients. All right. Anything else? I got off my soapbox. I didn't mean to do all that.
As, as convoluted as that sounded, uh, you really did a good synopsis of what's going on.
It's very serious.
It is very serious. And very serious for citizens of Randolph County.
Um, we talk about the governance, but the big thing is, is also the providers and the people on the ground. It, uh, the, the state has tended not to, um, let mental health lay for very long. It's been, I've been on that board nine years and it's been a continuous churning of things going on, initiatives and those kinds of things, the consolidations. And who winds up to get hurt in all that are the folks that are needing the services. Uh, it, it's confusing enough to go through the.
Behavioral health system.
As it is, it's even more confusing when you don't, when there's confusion within the system itself. So hopefully we'll get some, some answers on how that's going to, but the folks that are going to be needing the services are the ones that are going to be hurt the most.
Sure.
And that's, that's, that's unfortunate. And all this is being hurried through as well. It's, it's part of the Medicaid expansion. Going to rush, 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 um, and, and trying to get this consolidation done. And it's just, uh, to me, it's just a mammoth task to try to do in, in such a short period of time. And when you do that, mistakes typically are, are made. I have contacted, I copied on the email, our legislative delegation. I talked to Senator Craven. He's got a meeting with Secretary Kinsley on Monday, I believe he said. So we'll, we'll be working on that issue. But we are serious about, uh, making sure that, uh, our folks are, are well-cared-for and well-represented.
Well, again, to point out, some of the sheriff's initiatives that he's really trying to work on is going to be affected by this.
Yeah, yeah.
It will be. And no fault of yours. It's just what's going on.
Yeah. Okay. Anything, any other comments on board? It's seven thirty.
Well, hey.
All right. Any other, anything for the good of the county? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let me know. Saying aye? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming. I apologize for Chairman Frye. He was not feeling well, so he, uh, he went home. So be thinking about him.
I've got this one where it's children. Books, you know, my comments about the C-Go.
Yeah, yeah.